Like, is it something?
We're live.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the November 6, 2024 meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Exits are out this door and to your left and down this hall. If you could please now stand with me. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Holmes Roof Mounted Solar. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so this is, we'll be considering granting a resolution to and classifying the action and granting site plan approval for roof-mounted photovoltaic panels. This is at 54 Windmill Road in Poughkeepsie. Is there anyone here for the applicant? Thank you. Please state your name and just give us a quick little recap.
Okay, so my name is Cameron Avalos from Plug PB Solar. I know last time we left off with, we just need a title report for this project. I think it was just to make sure that everything is on one plane and not going on the neighboring planes. I just want to make sure. I believe you guys received it. I think I sent it a couple of days ago or probably within a week.
I believe we did. Is that correct, Victoria?
We got, yeah, we did get something, but it's in the same development as the other project, which didn't have any components about there.
Okay, right. So luckily, this was not the first time that we've had this.
Okay.
So thank you. Thank you for digging up what you could. So otherwise, we're ready to go, right?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. I'm just gonna go around. Ms. Rancin, do you have any comments on this?
I do not.
Pete?
No.
Ms. Palladaro?
No comments.
Mr. Tuttle?
No comments.
Mr. Waters?
No comments.
Ms. Wasser?
No comment.
Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
Mr. Gersio?
None.
Would anybody from the public like to speak for this application?
I just want to double check with something.
Yep.
The homeowner, they got like a, what is it? I think they received something in regards to a payment they have to make or something like that? Is that?
Can you spell that closer for me?
Was it a request for escrow payment?
I think it might be that. I believe so. Is that, is that correct?
I haven't sent anything for this escrow.
I'm not sure.
It might have been for zoning review fee, but I think it's already been paid, so.
Oh, it has, okay. I just wanted to double check.
That'll be one of the conditions, is to make sure all fees have been paid.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, we'll work that paperwork out.
Awesome.
Okay, well, if there's no one here who would like to speak to this application, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I think we have a resolution granting site plan approval. And John, I believe you have this.
Okay. Okay. Resolution granting site plan approval, Holmes Roof Mounted Solar Panels, dated November 6, 2022, Resolution 2024-37. Whereas the applicant, Stephen Holmes, has submitted an application for site plan approval for the installation of roof-mounted solar panels on a single-family townhome located in 54 Windmill Road, Hyde Park, New York. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby classifies the project as Type II Action Under Seeker, grant site plan approval to the project as depicted on the site plan set, and authorizes the chair or her authorized designee to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Uh-uh.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, and.
Thank you so much.
You're done, thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good night.
You too.
Take care.
The next item on the agenda is 64 Falkhill Road, Highbury Estates. This is also to, this is to, what is this for? This is an extension, correct?
Yep.
Yes. I'd like to open the public hearing. Can I get a motion? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So this is just to help them get the extension of the site plan approval deadlines so that they can complete their construction of the two dwellings on.
I mean, I can update you a little bit because.
Oh, yes, please.
I was up there a few days ago. They've gone through a couple of site contractors.
Ugh.
And also, they're on their second builder.
Oh.
So I had a meeting up there with the contractor. They've got, they're doing, you know, a nice job. They've got, you know, the driveway graded out. They're actually going to, they're actually gonna put down binder asphalt for when they start to build the main house. So I've been working with them on that, and then they'll have to get with our new building inspector to go over things for the guesthouse construction. And they're aware that before CO on the guesthouse, there was a list of things on the, on the map that had to be done before a CO was issued for the guesthouse. So they're up on that. So, you know, the new builder's good, you know, like, I know him, and, you know, the site contractor's the same site contractor that did the work around the town hall here, so I've known him a long time, too. So, so now it seems like they're back, you know, moving again.
Oh, that's excellent. So they should be able to proceed rather quickly.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
What a beautiful site that is. Okay, so Bonnie, did you have any comments on this?
I do not, thank you.
Victoria?
Just noting that it's a retroactive extension at this time, so no reason why we can't move forward with it. And that, just for the record, since the subdivision map was filed, some of the addresses did change.
Oh, okay.
We're calling it 64 Falkhill, but it now has a new address.
What is it?
It's in the resolution.
Oh, okay.
Except that.
Is that one of those, is that because of 911?
Highbury Ridge. Highbury Ridge.
Oh, okay.
But the post of this mailing is back to that address, so I don't really know.
Yeah, right. 76-100 Highbury Ridge.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. Mr. Dillon, do you have, I mean, Mr. Tuttle, do you have any?
I do not, no comments.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Ms. Wasser?
Nope.
Mr. Oliver?
Nope.
Mr. Gersio?
No.
Would anybody from the public like to speak to this application? If not, can I get a motion to close the public hearing? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and we have a resolution.
Resolution to grant retroactive two-year extension of time to complete construction of Highbury Estate, also known as 64 Falkhill Road. Resolution number 2021-08D, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant a retroactive two-year extension to complete construction of the project to May 9, 2026.
Can I have a second?
Oh, second, sorry.
All in favor, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or nays, motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Carriage Trails, also known as Crofton News. And there's Lou.
Good evening, everybody. Louis Cowman for the applicant.
Can I, may I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, just for clarification, I think the proper way to address him is Marshall Dillon.
What'd he say? Marshall Dillon, not Mr. Dillon. Oh, my goodness. I actually got that one.
It wasn't that esoteric. Anyhow, I have, I'm here tonight to hopefully get a resolution allowing me to, allowing the, or recognizing the mitigation plan, and there are certain conditions in this proposed resolution that I would like to address if possible.
Yep.
The, the primary comment I have is that I was hoping to get the board to authorize
the chairman, chairwoman, to sign the plan and the conditions to, that are listed here, which for the most part are okay, not to be, not to delay the signing, but having, after the signing, I will leave it up to Ms. Palladaro maybe to create a different deadline or timeline for that. But specifically, addressing the resolution, number nine, is a temporary and permanent easement from Dutchess Water, Dutchess State's Water Company. We're in the process of getting that. I'm told that the owner has agreed to the temporary easement, but he seems to be traveling through Europe, so I'm having trouble getting it back signed. But in any event, we understand that we need, you know, the temporary easement, in the event that we do extend beyond our, you know, our land, that we would get that, and I'm told it's okay. The permanent easement would only be determined after we've completed the bridge or laid out some plans, and we would, so we would need to be beyond that to prepare a permanent easement if necessary. But the bottom line is, we request that number nine, not delay the signing of the plan. The next comment I have is on, is number 14, where it describes a revision of sheet C-6. There is no C-6, that was the original set of drawings. In fact, what's on C-6 that they want include, that we need to include, is now on C-1.3, or 1-3, and 1-4, and I don't have, and that's part of 15, 16. I don't have any problem revising those sheets, it's just that there's no C-6 anymore. So that should not be a part of the resolution.
So where did those notes go?
They go on, well, you have it as C-1.1-3. I don't think that's the right number. I think it's C-1-3, to correct the reference to the planting schedule, and then to include sign details, that's not it. The stormwater, then 17 is Stormwater Landscaping Plan. That's C-6B. C-6B doesn't exist. It's all gonna be on C-1-3, but it will be included in the plans.
I mean, I think this is the kind of stuff that you just say, look, I moved it here, and we say condition met. I don't know if we need to.
Okay, no, I'm okay with that. Just understand that the, you know.
Yeah, you were just.
That, you know, the, the numbers are a little confusing.
Right, but I do appreciate that that's the level that you're looking at.
Certainly, that's understandable, but, you know, so I will, it will be included in the mitigation plan.
Yep. You know, as we said, it's, it's hard to sometimes.
No question about it.
Take the old sheet sets and.
Right, personally, from, I got cross-eyed reading it, so I can't imagine what Victoria had writing it, so, okay.
We can even say revision of landscaping sheets to include previous notes about.
There you go. Final approval of, all right, number 20. Again, I understand getting a final approval. We already have conceptual approval from DOT. I don't want to delay signing of the mitigation plan while we get the, you know, highway work permits. That takes months. That's my comment most of the way through.
While Pete's thinking of that, you also said C-6B doesn't exist?
It doesn't.
For 17?
Right. That's the landscaping, planting thing, and just get rid of the number, and we'll include it. I can't remember the number of the new sheet. I think it's C-1.4, whatever. Can't remember.
So, I'm sorry, are you done? Yeah. So as far as the, as far as the DOT works, so I believe my, my letter asked for, and this goes a little bit, you know, like, further. My letter asked for that the configuration of the lanes be shown on the final set of plans that are gonna be signed by the town, and I had, I had, I had done that, recognizing exactly what Lou is saying, is that they're retaining an engineer to do, now that he's got the approval, conceptual approval of, okay, here's, here's the lane configuration, now go draw up your detailed plans. So, and he's right that that will take, that that will take, take months to get it, like, approved, so.
I have no objection to including a sheet that describes the conceptual approval, which is, you know, with the T-wall and the lanes and all that.
Well, that can just be shown, that's, I mean, I think it may already be shown.
It is, it's on the DOT plan, but I'll ensure that it is.
So, so he's not gonna be able to start the construction on the bridge until he has his highway work permit, because I'm sure that his highway work permit is gonna include construction staging plans and some maintenance and protection of traffic, because the bridge is, I think it's maybe 75 feet from the edge of 9G, and they're gonna be, you know, backing large, like, trailers with the big concrete pieces, you know, of the bridge on it, so he's gonna have to have his highway work permit in place when they start the bridge work. So I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there that, you know, depending on what the planning board, like, says, the final, like, approval of the DOT could be contingent, might be contingent, could be provided at the time of starting, of starting work on the bridge, because I think, Lou, in our discussion the other day, you also wanted to, on the comment about, on the comment about the bridge plans.
21?
21, thank you. Yeah, right, right, like, below it, thanks. That you wanted to tie the final bridge plans to, you know, starting of the work, because what, what is gonna happen is that, and I've gone through this before, and I believe I, I believe I put it in my letter, that he's got to a point with the Fort Miller Company, who is going to supply, you know, the bridge. He hasn't signed a contract with them yet, so they don't have any money in their pocket. But they've been doing work, you know, preliminary plans and calc's and all that stuff, so what Lou is telling me, and I believe it, because I had it happen on my own jobs, is they're saying, look, you know, we've done enough work, you know, for free, until you sign a contract with us, we're not gonna provide any more, like, you know, engineering work, you know, on the plans. So he's kind of in a catch-22, so, and once he does, once he does sign them up, they have to finish, they have to finish the plans. The plans have to be reviewed for conformity by the design engineer, and there's notes on the plans now that say, once the design engineer approves the shop drawings for the bridge, they have to be sent to the town engineer for final review before he can release, you know, the bridge, you know, like, the making, the making of the bridge. So I think when we talked, you wanted to tie 21 to the release of the shop drawings for the manufacturer of the bridge, and, you know, again, I'm not, like, advocating for this, but one possibility on the DOT highway work permit would be to tie that to, you know, the bridge also.
So let me clarify a couple of things. We, we did pay for a set of drawings from.
Well, okay, all right, all right, all right.
No, 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 I mean, just let me.
There was some money.
We did, we, nobody works for free. So we got the initial set of drawings, which were commented on by CPL and then RENIA, and, but as Pete points out, they don't wanna go any further before they get the deposit on the bridge, the actual, you know, manufacturer. So, and we, you know, so we understand that, and if I can get this in place, then I start a serious, you know, contract with, on the bridge, and, you know, and on the DOT. But the thing is, is I would like to have in place this resolution, and then before we can mobilize and construct the bridge, it has to go through all these reviews that Pete is anticipating, and it's noted, you know, and, you know, and that I have to respond to these comments from the initial set of drawings, all of which I'll be able to do. But I need to, I want to do that after you've signed, so if the, if the threshold would be prior to, you know, constructing the bridge, we would do all of that. I, you know, I don't have a problem.
Does the town have to issue any permits, though, for construction of the bridge?
The EC, the EC has to issue permits because of the disturbance to.
We can't, we can't tie it to someone else's permit. It's gotta be.
Well, I mean, I have to respond to Pete's comments.
That's at the very end, sorry.
I have to respond to Pete's comments, I mean, you know, so we have to satisfy those comments, you know, but.
Can I, can I ask you a question? So when you, when you do send your shop drawings for the town engineer to review, and he approves it, so, right, there's gonna be back and forth, your comment, comment, and he signs off. Would that be a potential place?
So I guess, so normally we tie everything to some kind of trigger.
Yep.
So something's tied to building permit.
Oh, microphone.
We're talking about triggers in the resolution. And here, if he can start construction of the bridge without any town permit, we have no way of tracking or controlling whether or not Pete actually reviewed those design plans. He could put the whole bridge in, and then Pete could walk out and say, oh, look, when did you do this? I, we didn't, wasn't allowed, and he'll say, oh, well, I got my DC permit. So I'm not opposed to it, I just think.
Right.
We need to understand how it fits within the framework of the town's review process.
So if you look at the language of 20 and 21, it says before, you know, it says be resolved, planning board approves the mitigation plan and authorizes the chair to sign after compliance with the following conditions.
Right, so right now, you have to design the bridge before the site plan is signed.
Right, so what I'm looking for is, in 20 and 21, some language, not that we need to get an approval and all that, but rather that prior to mobilization or beginning construction of the bridge, or installation of the bridge, that 20 and 21.
I understand, I understand completely the language you're looking for, but I'm saying.
Well, I have an, let me think about this. So what about, what about, so he's got to, I'm just thinking out loud here, so people can hop in. He's gotta post a bond for the road, so can we tie the acceptance, so he can't start any work until the town board accepts the bond for Crofton Boulevard, which includes the bridge. So could we tie the town engineer approval of the bridge plans and the DOT, and the DOT final approval to town board acceptance of the road bond?
Which is, that's condition 27?
Right. So I can't start without posting those bonds, but I would appreciate if you would sign the plan.
Well, see, what we would do, I mean, and we've done this, we've done this before, we have, although we don't really like doing it, we have had conditions on a plan, I mean, on a resolution, and then we've had certain things that we pulled down and said, okay, before the first CO on building, blah, 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 blah.
Right.
You gotta have this, 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 and this in. So that's kind of what we're talking about, pulling, if, assuming that the board is in, like, agreement, we talk, right, we'd be talking about pulling these out of the main conditions. And putting them under.
Condition.
And prior to town board acceptance of a road bond, you need to have blah, 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 blah.
Why don't we have our own bond?
Because it's gonna be.
To the planning board. A separate bond to the planning board.
No, the town board, huh?
I'm, I'm just asking a hypothetical question.
Well, you gotta have, he's talking about a bond to the town for Crofton Boulevard.
Well, the town board's gonna have a bond, because it's gonna be a town roadway.
Yeah, that's, there's gonna be a bond.
Right, but I'm just saying, creating our own bond on this issue.
I don't know, I've never, I've never, like, heard of.
She doesn't usually have a bond with the town board.
We haven't done it before?
No, but, I mean, I would also just like to say, we've, we have not actually created a new road before with a bridge, and any time that I've been here.
No, that's correct.
So this is all.
Right.
Like, it happens very rarely, so whatever we can try to figure out.
Understood, but I, I think.
Especially with the triggers and the permits.
Yeah, understood.
That's, that's the tangible thing that I can think of.
The thing being that, rather than being before they will sign, before you will sign.
Yeah, no, but I think we're going towards something.
Where before we allow to install or construct or mobilize, to install the bridge and do the DOT work, that, you know, the bonds have to be in place. That's, that's what I'm, I wanna get the map signed, and then.
We, we understand. No, we, we understand that. We're just trying to work through.
You, you agree that before you start any bridge work, you have to have the road bond in place anyways, 'cause it's part of the road?
Yeah, the original bond had a bridge.
It is part of the road, yeah.
It's part of the road.
Okay, so then, if that's the case, and Pete's okay with it, I think we can move those conditions down to that, prior to the planning board recommending acceptance of the performance bond for the proposed town road, 'cause we have to make a recommendation to the town board.
Yep, yep.
That the following conditions shall be met.
Yep.
And then if he doesn't meet them, you're not gonna make your recommendation, and the town board.
That's, that's good.
Won't issue the performance.
That, I like that, because again.
So that comes back, that comes back, so you're still, I don't mean a point.
No.
But the planning board's still in.
Yes, yes. And it's just basically not forcing to have the final done very early when, yes, I understand.
Right.
Because there are so many other steps that have to take before you can get there.
Right, yeah, I mean, I'm not putting a shovel in tomorrow, anyway, but 20, 21, and 27 would be in the second category.
So then, 20, 21, 27, I'm gonna reword a little, move down to be a different condition. So after, after we get through all of the comments.
Yep.
We can take a little break, and I can.
But can I just, just do a quick, is the board okay with, with us entertaining doing that?
I am.
Okay, good, all right. Next on your list?
Similarly, on 29, the local stormwater permit. Before I can start, I need a local stormwater permit. Got it. But can you sign before that?
No, they wanna see your practices on the plan, and where everything's going and make sure it works.
They should have issued it already, 'cause I know I have all the permits.
Then it won't be a problem.
Yeah, just leave it. I think it's gonna be fine, because we must.
Okay, it does, it's not at the same level as the DOT and.
Because we must have already issued, wow, I don't wanna say, I mean, that was back in 2007. It should have been issued, because you were able to file your NOI to get, you know, your stormwater covered, so I'll work that out with Tad, leave it, it's not.
While you're working that out with Tad, work out 30 as well.
That's 30.
Approval of the SWIP.
And the five-acre waiver and then.
All right, well, that's easy. I mean, we already have a SWIP, and we just have to give you, we just have to give you the five-acre waiver notes that we like from other jobs that we've recently done, so we have to give those to you.
And 31 should probably go in that second category about, you know, you can sign, but you can't do anything until we post the bond?
That's up to Pete.
I know, what's this one?
This is, 31 is a performance guarantee for the stormwater improvements.
Stormwater improvements.
Well.
Don't those also get done before?
Prior.
I mean, you're, you're working on that at the same time you're working on designing bridges.
So I'm a little, so we, we, I mean, there, there are two stormwater basins that serve Crofton Boulevard, that are gonna be part of the road dedication, that are gonna be part of the bond for the overall road, if this means, if this doesn't mean that, and means for all the stormwater practices on the site, that even the town's not going to take over. We've never done that before.
This is an old condition that was carried over from the prior approval.
Yeah, because.
So we have, I mean, we can modify it, it's a new approval, but.
Yeah, 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 we want, we do want, so, so I'm gonna cover in the two stormwater basins that are part of the road drainage, which will become the town's, that's gonna be covered in the performance bond that we discussed previously.
The road bond.
In the road. So I don't think that we need.
31?
We need 31, because what we do is, Tad and I, is, as they're completing a phase, we ask for, like, as built of, you know, the roads. we ask for, like, as built of, you know, the roads in that particular phase, we ask for as built of the stormwater basins to make sure that they're built, like, right. So we have, we have built-in, um, checks and balances before C.O.s are issued, to make sure that the stormwater has been constructed in accordance with the plans. So, uh, we've never asked for a bond on a private site, because we have to hammer with, you know, the C.O. for whatever that's gonna be.
Come on, you can knock out six lines if you get rid of that one.
I mean, I'm, if the board, if Pete's recommending it, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I, understood, I, um-
I mean, it's gonna be part of the road bond.
Like, for instance-
Right, that's what I-
Like, for instance, on, um, Maple Ridge, or that one, that's not Maple Ridge, River Ridge. So, we, we only have a bond on the one stormwater basin that's gonna become the town's when the roads are dedicated. Now, there's a bunch of little ones-
Throughout the complex, yep.
Throughout the site.
Yep.
But as those are built and constructed as part of a phase of buildings-
Yep.
Tad and I make sure through as builds and certifications by the engineer, that those basins are the right size, they're built in accordance with the plans, or we don't give a C.O., so.
Okay, yeah.
No, I mean, Pete, this is where your experience is invaluable.
Yeah, again, I didn't see this, I mean, I was busy last night from 12 o'clock to 3 o'clock.
When I sent it?
I know, I look, I'm going, 12:05?
Okay, um, and, so, all right, so 31, uh, I think is extraneous, you guys will decide on how you wanna incorporate that.
Which one?
31, the, the, you know, it's part of the road bond. Uh, 32, this is about the bus shelter. So, the bus shelter is in my plans, you have a curb cut, you have the detail-
I thought that you were-
So, there was, let's just go back for a minute.
Yeah.
The original plan set, the approved plan set, has one design, and then you have a slightly different design-
The bus shelter you're talking about now, right?
Hmm?
The bus shelter?
Yeah, the bus.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So, this was to, asking you to put the shelter back in, or, you're gonna have to come back to the board, though, because they don't want to just approve it without hearing from the school district. So this means, in the next month or so, you're gonna have to work this out, so get back on the agenda, have the board say, okay, this is what, this is the final one.
The letter was sent today, asking them to reaffirm.
Well, let me, let me discuss this with the board right now. So I've been calling them, we've called them two years ago, one year ago, I called them four times in the last, uh, couple of weeks. I get messages, I called up the assistant to the traffic director, she says she's not in, I said, I know, she goes, uh, well, who can I speak to? She says, well, I can put you in the voicemail for this person. I said, I don't want voicemail, I wanna talk to someone who I can discuss this intelligently. I didn't say it like that. I, I was trying to be nice. I was trying to be nice.
That's the right thing to say.
Okay, I, I withheld myself, but it's very frustrating. But, so, all right, so, however, the, the, the bus shelter is in, the shelter, you know, the shelter design is shown in the details, and if it's not, I will, but I'm pretty sure it is, and the road is three, uh, lanes wide. It's, you know, it's got room for a bus, it's got room for people to park, it's got room for the kids.
I'm having trouble seeing that, Lou, on, on the plans, like, when I look at, the, the, the road width for the main roadway isn't marked on the site plan.
I know, we mentioned it.
But, but on this, the, the, on the road that adjoins it, it, it's marked as 24 feet, and just looking at one-
You mean on the, on the private roads?
On the private roads, it's 24 feet.
Yeah, it's, Crofton Boulevard is built to town specs.
Heard, but I, I'm just, I'm looking at that 24 feet wide, and shifting it over, and it sure doesn't look like three lanes wide to me.
Yeah, the scale doesn't match.
What I'm seeing, um-
Okay, I'm pretty sure it is, but I will make sure of that, but-
So the option, Lou, the board, this is an issue for the board, so they weren't ready to approve it tonight, uh, without this condition, this helps move things forward so you can really narrow down on this one issue.
Why don't you let me reach out?
Well, I understand, but let me, let me just put this in front of the board again. So, I'm trying to get the school district to respond, and if they say, no, we want you to have, you know, put it out on, on, on 9G. So is that the board's decision? Leave it on 9G, have the, have the parents park on the shoulder?
Lou, 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 stop, please. So we have discussed this-
Okay.
At, at, in depth, at the last meeting.
Yeah, we did.
And we, we talked about all this, we, we went down every single possible way that we could have a bus pick up children. We all came to the agreement that the current, again, I didn't know it wasn't on the current, but that the way that it was agreed to at the original 2003 site plan set, and that it hasn't moved, it may have changed some configuration, but overall, it's same place. Nice turnaround at the end, at the, of the cul-de-sac. Drafted a letter, I sent that off, I had added to it the, um, their policies on what they want for safe pickup of children for the schools. And I also gave them a little picture, showing them where the bus shelter was on Crofton Muse, and I asked them to please get back to us and, and let us know that if, that they agree.
Great, thank you.
And I don't have a problem calling them, give them, I mean, if it just got, if it just got sent.
We just sent it out today.
Let me call, let me call early next week to the transportation office and, you know-
Okay, I appreciate that.
I'm not saying I carry more weight than you, but maybe-
Well, I, I think I am a little heavier, but that's fine.
Well, I don't wanna say that.
But, but, you know, the bottom line is, we, we have all come to the conclusion and-
No, I, I thank you for that, I, I know you, you, you share my concern.
But to Victoria's point, the condition does need to stay there, because we do need to get an agreement.
So let me ask you, so let me present this scenario. Okay, so we all agree that that's a preferable location, and by the way, the only difference from the original plans is the parking, which was directly behind the, the bus shelter-
Which, again, yes, yes.
Is, is not there, we have landscaping, plus I have added parking nearby, and you can park on the street.
It's why the stormwater basin is-
I don't have to repeat it, I'm sorry, yeah, I don't, I, I wanna make my point, so I can't help myself. But, uh, eh, um, so they don't respond, or they say no, now what?
We'll deal with that.
So, you have an offer from Pete, quote from the attorney. I will also do what I can to, if I need to stop there during the day and just-
They're not gonna do that, they, they work with us.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
All right, then, that's it, thank you.
I, I just, I just think that the-
We'll work it out.
-condition needs to remain so that we can make sure that everybody has signed off.
And we don't forget, really, I mean-
Exactly, it's, yes, yes. But it's in play.
Okay, uh, I, I have no other issues with any of the other, uh, conditions, you know, we'll get them done before the signing, not a problem.
I just, uh, I just was reading something here on 33. So, access plan that demonstrates the Moose Lodge will be accessible during construction to the satisfaction of the planning board engineer. I, I don't wanna be the, uh-
Cop.
I don't wanna be the cop, um-
Oh.
'Cause I, I, uh, I have my letter-
Someone's gotta approve it.
No, 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 but what I thought, uh, I'm pretty sure my letter said the fire district had to approve it, and I would think the Moose Lodge would have to be, you know, like, part of that, that they're, I mean, not that they're gonna be the be all and end all, but we, but we say we're gonna provide them with access.
I don't wanna, I, we can't give the Moose Lodge approval authority over the plan set, but we can-
Let's, can we do, I mean, we can do the fire department, right, because they have to make sure that they access the Moose Lodge, right?
They demonstrated that one lane in the street.
They didn't have a comment on the access.
I had, I had, um, Howie, Ted and I had a meeting, uh, a virtual meeting with Lou and his potential, um, marine contractor, who was very good, um, he explained everything, he had a little, like, sketch, it was a contractor, like, sketch about how they were gonna do it, it made perfect sense to Tad, myself, and Howie.
Oh.
It's just, it was a contractor's, like, sketch, at some point, that has to be turned into a more, a little bit more detailed engineering plan, so that the fire department can see it and make sure that they're okay with it, so.
How about the fire department and the highway superintendent?
That's, that's fine.
Yep.
Great minds.
Let's do that.
Satisfaction of the, you said highway superintendent?
And the fire-
And the fire department.
Which, which fire district is it?
Roosevelt.
Yeah, I think that's the way to go.
Big red.
I mean, they're the ones who literally have skin in the game.
They're the authority.
Well, I'll be involved in it, but.
So you're gonna take that, or a letter from the Moose Lodge?
No, I'm gonna leave that, because if Moose Lodge says, you know what?
We're gonna close for a couple of months.
We're gonna close for two months for winter, then we don't-
It's not about agreeing to what we're showing, it, you know, if I can work out a deal with them and saying, go have your bingo at, uh, the bar. I'm sorry. I've been here too long as well, I know.
All right. And no other comments on, on the other conditions, or, or the be it further resolves, or anything?
Who's happy?
Okay.
We are in public hearing.
Okay, so, yes, we are in public hearing. Let me start with Bonnie.
I have no comments.
You've, you've been commenting, they are in the conditions, they are in, they've been memorialized.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Taro, any, any other comments?
Nope.
Victoria, what do you think?
So, I think we've worked it out, but I do need a few minutes to reconfigure the resolution, so I don't know if you wanna skip, or come back to this at the end of the meeting. Well, right, we closed the hearing.
Yeah, yeah, see if there's any comments, or-
See if there's comments.
Yeah, I can do that, I'm, I'm happy to do that, because this was the-
Once we get to something that's, doesn't require-
You.
Me, like the site plan waivers, I can-
Yeah.
Update the resolution and-
Okay, I'm happy to, I'm happy to accommodate that. Lou?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, let me continue going. Uh, Mr. Tuttle, any, any more comments?
I think that just as part of that, the, as part of number 32, right now on the site plan, it would be good to show where parents are expected to park, and to have a width on that road, or as part of that conversation, um, afterwards, just, I don't think anything needs to be changed in the resolution, but that's just something that would be good to see, even if it's just a screenshot or something for us, to say, like, yes, this is X-wide, and here's where the parking will be for parents, and et cetera.
Dash, dary, or something.
Yeah. Thank you, that's actually excellent.
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Waters?
Hi.
You concur?
The answer.
Okay, it's Waters?
Uh, no, I think we've covered it.
Okay. Mr. Oliver?
Nothing to add.
Okay, Mr. Garciao?
Nothing.
Okay, great. All right, so, to give, to give Victoria some time, I think I can go ahead and, oh, is there anybody here who'd like to speak to this application? Ah, we do. I think you're our first one, ever.
No, I just wanna clarify to the record, and I know that Pete talked to-
Name?
Excuse me, John.
Who are you?
John Lombardi. Uh, I just wanna clarify, so the board knows, I know that, uh, Bob Delarm and the guys at the Moose Club were very, very interested in knowing the logistics, everything that's going on, not only fire access, but bas- basically make sure that-
General access.
The place is functional, because they do have, not, not, as a joke, the bingo is, is, they're a source of income to, to keep them afloat.
They're doing something there almost every day.
Yeah, so, let's just keep in mind, not only are we worrying about the, the fire access, but, uh, it is a functional operation there, and we gotta respect them and do whatever we can to, to make sure that they don't financially sink during, during this construction project.
John, John, I had a conver, um, Bob, Bob and I had a conversation, uh, a few weeks ago, in fact, so I updated him on the project, because I guess they saw some work was going on out there that just, and I told him, it was just, you know, health department, you know, like, checking things and blah, blah, blah. So I explained to him where we were, I, and I also promised him, he's got, he's got, you know, my number, I've got his number, I also talked to, um, Tom, his last name's escaping me at the moment, but anyways, he's a retired, um, D.O.T. guy, uh, he's-
Myers, right, yeah.
Myers, thank you. He's a member of, uh, you know, the Moose Lodge, he called, so I promised, I promised Bob that I would keep him in, you know, the loop, and that we would go over the plan with him, because Bob's been a longstanding citizen of the town of High Park, and, and you know, the Moose Lodge has been there a long time.
Just along you're involved, I mean, just with the fire department and Howie, if you're involved and, and everybody keeps the communication going, that would be great. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardi. Yes, we under, we undertook a lot of discussion about how to maintain access to the Moose Lodge throughout this entire project, especially the building of the bridge, and that was actually very educational to see all the things that they can do to ensure the access, so, um, thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak to this application? Okay, if not, then I would like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing, and then we will move on and do some other business, and then we will circle back and entertain a resolution.
I'll be here.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, and we'll be, we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay. So... Victoria, do I need to, can, is it allowable to, can I go into the next public hearing?
Yes, yeah, we can go into the next hearing.
Okay, great. The next item on the agenda is the Vanderbilt-Linton Morton Lot Line Alteration and Additional Dwelling. Come on down. Can I get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you very much. Okay, so there's been some offline meetings, I know that we have, uh, James and David.
Good evening, uh, good to see you all, um, thank you for having us here tonight. Um, so, uh, James Hartford from River Architects, David Schaefer, owner's representative, um, and, um, we've got, um, uh, we're basically asking to combine three lots, to merge them and extinguish the, uh, property lines between them, um, and our intention is to build, uh, a pool house with a swimming pool, um, a, um, private, um, kind of workshop studio, as well as a, a secondary guest cottage on the property.
Yes, and we have been in discussions most, most frequently about the actual driveways and the connections and fire access, correct?
Yes.
And I know that there's been some meetings, and you've submitted some new drawings and photos, and tell us how that went.
Terrific. So, we met on site with Ray from the fire district, and he was very helpful, clarified that his request for nine Vanderbilt, the existing house and the existing driveway, that it is not to be 25 feet, the whole length of it, but just 25 feet at the curb cut. And that's easily, you know, well, it's acceptable and obviously easily accommodated. There was, he noticed that one tree was kind of leaning into the lane of travel, and he requested that be trimmed back, and absolutely no problem. So nine Vanderbilt is, I think, pretty much resolved there. And then for the new driveway, there's been a discussion with Peter about where that one is situated. Our plans had shown it closer to the neighbors to the east, which we were 10 feet off of the property line to the edge. That, we've, Peter has requested that we match the driveway opposite, just to the west of Hillman, but our concern with that location is that we've got mature trees there. Directly opposite is a very large oak, and with the root structure, you know, would be very much compromised by the building of the driveway. So our request is a bit of a compromise to shift it over approximately 62 and 1/2 feet from the property line from the edge, so that we're avoiding all of those mature trees, as well as the line of trees that would buffer between the two properties. I think that's a pretty reasonable accommodation.
Well, let me clarify that a minute, so, and again, maybe there's a little confusion, but where you had the driveway on the very first plan was 100% fine, where it intersected Vanderbilt Lane 10 to 15 feet off the property line, right across from the other driveway. Highway Superintendent and I were 100% like fine with that. But your plan had it going right straight into the property that would take down a lot of trees in that like buffer that's there now, right on the edge of, you know, the lawn. So, I had sent out a sketch before I went away in September that said, okay, keep that location, but come in a little bit and bend the driveway like a little to go right at the edge of the lawn, and, you know, in my view, save, you know, the tree line that was in there, it would be good for the neighbor, it'd be good for your client. So that's what I thought you were going to do, so now you've, I don't know, maybe you misinterpreted what I said, but now you've moved the driveway down more, that's even closer to the oak tree, and I don't know why you did that, and you came in and then you're bending it back this way.
I think we misunderstood each other.
Yeah, so I think if you just leave it where it was on the original plan, and your plan here is, you know, is fine, the way that you're following, you know, the lawn and the tree line, but just-
Bend it in.
Here, why don't you come over and just-
Yep, and we have extra copies here if anyone needs it.
So just do this.
I believe this is Hillman, and that's the driveway of the neighbors, but maybe I'm mistaken.
But this, no, this is the-
Yeah, we're drawing a line with this.
Here's, you know, the property line, and here's, you know, the tree line about, which like is right, and this is, and this is, you know, the driveway across the street that the Highway Superintendent and I wanted you to line it up. This is where you had it, right?
Yeah.
So just leave it and come in like this. Is that a problem?
I think that's, no, I don't think it's a problem. I think we completely misunderstood.
Yeah, it's fine, it's fine, just show it there.
It's not a big deal.
Yeah, that, I think it's, it's, I had some photos here.
That one you can pick up.
What was that?
You can pick up that mic.
Yeah, I think you can sit down and you can talk, talk to us.
So that would put it here.
Yeah.
So we would be going through these two trees versus on the other side of this tree, which is here.
Look, I mean, you may have to take down a couple of those small trees, right, like at the beginning, but that's where the Highway Superintendent wants, you know, the driveway, where you have it.
That's the three and the two-inch tree, right?
Yeah, that's these two trees.
Yeah, they're little trees, so, I mean, I don't-
So I think it's just to align this.
This is a straight shot into the property without disturbing any trees or any other-
But then it's going to be, but then it's going to be, that's going to be offset from the driveway across the street, that's not, that's not where the Highway Superintendent wants it.
And why, why, why would that, so this is where?
Because that's the way, that's the way, that's the way that we always do it. We try to go line up new driveways with an existing driveway, you know, it lessens, you know, the conflict, again, this is not a heavily traveled, you know, road, but, you know, we generally do line up like driveways, I mean, we're talking about 10 like feet or so, and one little like tree.
And they seem to be small trees, they're 10-inch diameter.
I mean, your first plan was going to basically knock out all those trees in the box.
Two and three.
Yeah, they're small.
Do you want, can you, would you mind showing the board members what Pete is requesting?
So, here's a sketch, so this is what we're requesting, basically.
Yeah, so it's to line up with the other driveway across the door.
Yep.
Versus, so this is where the new proposed location is.
Yeah, right. And that's what Pete was saying to do, right?
Yeah, I understand, I can line it up to reference with opposite.
So, wait. This is what the Highway Super is requesting, is this?
Because that didn't make sense to me either.
To bend it around.
Just snake it, yeah.
And then this is what you are requesting to do, is to come up here. This, I'm not sure we work with the fire department, they're the damage.
Well, it's not a huge damage, it was something.
So Chris, they're talking about coming here instead of from here.
You just have to make sure any branches are clear, because the fire department are high enough, whether they're not going to hit it.
I don't know how the rest of the board is feeling about this, to me, this feels like an issue between the applicant and the Highway Super with Pete, like, it's, my preference personally would be save trees first, make it look like a nice driveway, and lining it up with the other driveway would be a distant third, but I'm not the Highway Super, and that's, you know, there, so to me, this could be a condition of approval, or it could just be an offline thing, I don't, I don't feel like it needs to be a board issue.
So, here's the thing, we've-
Yeah, but I think-
So here's the thing, we have tried offline meetings, but I'm not sure we've actually had everybody all at once. We've had, we've had Pete in the Highway Department, we've had Ray and the applicant, we've had, but we haven't actually had everybody.
I mean, if you, if you look at the chain, pretty minor.
Yes, it is.
He's, I think he's trying to save whatever trees, he wants it natural setting, that's the whole intention of the project. They weren't saving them under the first plan, because all, all that whole buffer was coming out. So I, so I'm trying to save, I'm trying to save the big like buffer-
Right, yes.
At the expense of two little trees.
I understand.
So- But again, if you want to have a condition that they go talk to the, I mean, I don't want to, I'm not going to go out there anymore.
I don't think it's necessary.
So, if they want to argue with the Highway Superintendent, but I can tell you, but I can tell you what he's going to say.
I think the confusion as to which driveway it was supposed to be opposite-
Okay.
Is kind of what has driven so much of this, because when I was at the site and I looked, it was, it didn't make sense, so, yes. Yes, I do realize that there was another driveway further east, that's the one that we're talking about.
Pete caught that.
Well, let's go to Victoria and ask her, where are we in the process?
Also, I mean, there are, once you figure out where the driveway is going and you have a layout design, we still have a few steps, because you need to decide whether you're moving forward with the variance from zoning board appeals, for the removal of the debris in the street corridor, that was a decision point that we had left.
Yes, we've communicated that, yes, that we would remove the debris.
We were still waiting a final response from SHPO, we were, at some point, you have to submit the next set of applications for the final subdivision approval, because we did accept our sketch.
I'm sorry, can you just repeat that?
Because you're doing a lot line alteration?
Yeah.
We have to also do the merging of the lots, and that requires a sketch plan, which we approve for sketch, but sometimes we, don't we do that, we can do it once, all at once, because it's minor.
Right, I mean, it's just the-
It's the steps.
The paperwork for the application-
It is the steps that are needed.
It's not, it doesn't slow it down procedurally, we go through the process.
Just yet another step, because you are doing the lot line alterations.
Yeah, I thought we captured that in the drawings that we submitted, though.
All right, we'll just follow up with the planning board office, please, just make sure that's all being done.
But the bottom line is, you are very close.
Mm-hmm.
All of this work is, you're kind of where you, where you need to be. So, Victoria, should they, would it be a condition on the site plan for them to finalize the location?
We could leave it open as a condition, normally you want the site plan to show which trees are going to be removed, which trees are going to stay, but, you know, this is pretty minimal, it's up to your discretion if you are willing to leave that as a condition.
Yes, okay, all right.
Great.
So, Bonnie, did you have any comments on this?
No, I think we discussed the buffer for some time to try and keep that, and we are waiting for State Historic Preservation Office, I think you must have sent something in again.
They requested further clarification, and I believe the, I was told by the archaeologist that we've hired that that's, that she's submitted a response to them.
Okay. So that'll get buttoned up at some point, so we can, you know, close that out in terms
of SEER, and I think those were our primary comments at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Sotero, any other words of wisdom and advice?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Victoria?
So, right, I think once, once they make their decisions, we'll get another plan set. Because if you need the variance, you want to start that process.
Yep.
Mr. Tuttle?
No comments.
Thank you, Mr. Waters?
No comment.
Ms. Wasser? Mr. Oliver?
No comment.
Mr. Garciao, would anybody in the audience like to speak to this application? No, you've already said, you've already talked. You spoke eloquently, by the way. Okay, all right, so if there are no other comments, November 20th, is that our next opportunity?
Our next meeting.
Our next meeting?
I don't know if they're applying for variance, maybe we should push it off.
We could do it for a month, in a month? So, have you, have you made application yet for variance?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
Do you have a hearing date?
Have you been before them yet?
No, we haven't.
Okay, are you set to be before them?
I believe so, I'll check on that.
Is that this month, you think, or the next?
I don't know.
Okay. So, let's-
It's not maybe early, but it's still the day after, I mean, second week.
Yeah. All right, so we would need to meet next on the 4th?
Yeah, December.
Yes, December 4th. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing to December 4th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, and we're very close.
We'll see you there.
Great, thanks.
All about the paperwork. Thank you. Now we are out of public hearing. And we are on workshop. Oh, Jeffrey Groves. Next item on the agenda is Jeffrey Groves Estates. That's, that's you.
That's you, right?
Okay. Blair Road.
Oh, yeah. It's been a long day.
I can only imagine.
Okay, so this is our application for putting amenities in the open space area, includes bocce court, gazebo, the walking trail was already approved, but they want to review it still, and outdoor run with fencing.
Fence dog run, right?
So there's nothing terrible.
Oh, no, could you just speak a little more into the microphone?
Sorry.
Thanks.
I can't get speaking right today, okay.
That's quite all right.
So there are, there's a walking trail, a gazebo, a bocce court-
Dog run.
With a pergola, and a dog run, fenced in dog run. None of these are significant, you know, impacts on the, on the land, and they're just going to be a nice inclusion to our development.
Yes, nice amenities. Have you applied for the variance?
I did.
You have, okay.
Do you have a hearing date?
I've been trying to get ahold of Sarah Ryan, they seemed, they wanted some more information about grading, you know, there's really not much grading to go on, other than to level the gazebo, and oh, yeah, the bocce court needs to be leveled, that ought to be fun, if it wasn't, and, so, but, you know, that's adding sand and things, so.
Right.
So hopefully I'll get that.
All right, good, so you've made application, which means that we're looking to, we would be reaffirming SEER tonight and referring the application, because these would be site plan amendments as well.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Let me go around. Ms. Francis?
No comments, thank you.
Mr. Sotero? Ms. Paula Darrow?
No.
Mr. Tuttle?
Nope.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Ms. Wasser?
No.
Mr. Oliver, Mr. Garciao?
No.
Okay, then we do have a resolution reaffirming SEER and referring the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning, get this off and running. I believe you have this.
I do. Resolution to reaffirm a SEER negative declaration and refer the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, Jeffrey Groves Estates, recreational amenities on open space lot, November 6, 2024. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it further resolved that the planning board hereby reaffirms its prior SEER determination of significance adopted on November 2, 2005, and last reaffirmed on July 17, 2024, determining that the amended project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. Two, directs its secretary to refer the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section 239m of the general municipal law.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions or nays, motion carries. There we are, there's one resolution for you tonight. Okay. Next item on the agenda is, I can't remember the right place. Ah, Updike, yeah. So we're now into other business. This is-
Me.
This is a site plan waiver for approval of a generator on 15 Hudson Drive, and we have a recommendation from our zoning administrator for a site plan waiver. And Mr. Waters, this is yours.
Yes, Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Joyce Updike, 15 Hudson Drive, Hyde Park, New York, Site Plan Waiver, Generator, Resolution 2024-45, whereas an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Joyce Updike on October 15, 2024, for a property located at 15 Hudson Drive, Hyde Park, and whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed installation and described in the building permit received by the Building Department on October 3, 2024, and per the waiver request to the Planning Board dated October 15, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And nays or abstentions, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Jesse Oliger, looking for a site plan waiver approval for exterior stairs and landing at 4413 Albany Post Road, Hyde Park, New York. The zoning administrator has recommended a site plan waiver, as this is located in the SAS, the Scenic Area of Statewide Significance. Mr. Tuttle, I think this is yours.
Yep, Site Plan Waiver for an exterior staircase and landing, Resolution 2024-46, whereas a request for a site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Jesse Oliger to construct an exterior staircase and landing on the existing multifamily home, and whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved, the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for proposed installation as described in the building permit application received by the Building Department on September 25, 2024, and per the site plan waiver request received by the Planning Department on October 17, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or nays, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Havland Mobile Home Community Water Treatment Facility. I believe we have Lena and Jason are here.
I'm Jason Pittinger out from Pittinger and Oates Engineers, we're representing the applicant tonight, and we're here to present the water treatment plant building for the site at Havland Mobile Home Park, and actually to request a slight plan waiver for the Mobile Home Park Water Treatment Plant and Building itself.
Thank you, and this is a bit of an emergency, correct?
It's somewhat of an emergency, yeah, so we are under orders to correct the water, potable water situation at the parks, and we had obtained approval from the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. Took a little while to obtain that, because, again, what we were doing is combining three wells and eliminating one well and combining the production from two of the wells and providing treatment for that, so we went through an extensive approval process with Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. And the facilities that provide treatment require a building, whereas the existing wells, one of them was buried, the other one had a, I guess you could call it a makeshift building and some other facilities, and those are all going to be demolished and routed to this one building where it'll be combined and treated and then distributed to the park. So, we have obtained approval from Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, I believe Mr. Teed has provided a recommendation letter requesting that this project move forward, and it's my understanding that, I don't know if she was able to, but the TAD was in favor of authorizing a waiver of the site plan approval for this portion of the project.
Yes, the zoning administrator has recommended a site plan waiver for the emergency installation, and we do have a resolution prepared tonight. How old is, how old is that park, do you know?
The park, I would, just based on the vintage of- I would, just based on the vintage of the mobile home units, I would guess it's probably from the early 60s, but I'm not 100% sure.
There's, there's three, three systems there. The one near Andrea Court has an underground pressure tank that keeps leaking. So every time, over last summer, we had to go there and do extensive repairs. And then just recently, the one down on Deborah, the other side of the park, all the pressure tanks are rotted. It's a, it's a block building that's underground. And we, we explored every option. I'm John Lombardi, AMI Construction, the contractor that's going to build the, the plant and doing the infrastructure. We had numerous conversations with Dutchess County Wastewater to see if we can extend the water main from over next to Cedar Apartments, which is about 2,800 feet. And of course, the time we got the meeting set and had discussions with them, they said it would take a good three or four years. And unfortunately, we just don't have any time left. It's, this whole system is dilapidated. It's on its last leg. I got some emails just from, just from Jason Teed that's been out there numerous times and gave the approval process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's supporting.
Are sharing?
Getting this project underway ASAP because it's a desperate, it's a desperate need to repair or replace it, you know?
Understood. Thank you for, for the additional information.
We lost, we lost a little time originally, the plans that were submitted, and I know the TAD was overwhelmed. We lost a little time. Originally, when the plans were submitted to her, they were, the engineers were working with a 50-foot setback off the road. And then when she, and that information was given to these guys, when she did the final review, there was something in there that she didn't pick up that basically said that it would be a 150. For mobile home, you needed 150-foot setback. So the engineer had to go back and do, you know, redesign the building and change the location. And we lost a considerable amount of time. And now we're getting into the winter months, so we would really like to get the foundation in and hopefully get the structure up prior to the weather.
Understood. Yes. No, wow. You're making me anxious. Yes, the poor tenants. So we do have a resolution prepared. Stephanie, I think you have it. Does, let me just ask, does anybody have any questions for, for the applicant? No? No? Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Haviland MHC LLC, 80 Haviland Road. Site plan waiver for water treatment facility and generator, resolution 2024-47. Whereas, an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by owners Haviland MHC LLC, Joseph Wolf, for a new water treatment building with a standby generator to resolve a health violation. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the building permit submitted by Haviland MHC LLC for the installation of the new water treatment facility and generator at this location and per the site plan waiver request dated October 23rd, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. May you be able to resolve this quickly. I forgot. Okay, yep.
Here, I don't need one. I have it on my screen.
Next item on the agenda is Carlton Forster. Looking for a site, getting a site plan waiver approval for roof-mounted photovoltaic panels. He resides at 39 Franklin Road in Hyde Park. And I don't think anybody's here for him, so we have a resolution prepared.
39 Franklin Road, Hyde Park, New York. Site plan waiver, roof-mounted solar, resolution number 2024-48. Whereas, an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Carlton Forster on October 29th, 2024, for the property located at 39 Franklin Road, Hyde Park. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved, the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for proposed installation as described in the building permit application dated September 19th, 2024, and per the waiver request of the Planning Board dated October 29th, 2024, by the applicant Carlton Forster.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or nays? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is another site plan waiver for a screened porch and repair and a rooftop deck by Brooks Baselman at 7 Howard Boulevard in Hyde Park. And we have a resolution prepared, and John, it's yours.
Brooks Baselman, 7 Howard Boulevard, Hyde Park, New York. Site plan waiver, screened porch slash deck dated November 6th, 2024, resolution 2024-49. Whereas, an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Brooks Baselman on November 1st, 2024, for property located, located at 7 Howard Boulevard in Hyde Park. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed installation as described in the building permit received by the Building Department on October 3rd, 2024, and per the waiver request of the Planning Board dated November 1st, 2024.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so we are done with all of our small little resolutions. I think this is for me. Hot brew. It's warm. Beat me to it. Alright, so I don't want to be confused. Take this. Hold this here. Do not want it. Okay. Come on up. We now have a resolution with miraculous speedy updates.
Now Lou, are you really sure that you want to do this because you're not going to be able to come here that much anymore?
No. He's going to miss the ride.
He'll find another reason.
Okay, so we have a resolution to approve a mitigation plan set and reissue the special use permit for Crofton Mews. Resolution number 16-36GM. Wow, okay. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby makes the following findings pursuant to section 108-8.4 of the zoning law. One, the project is consistent with purpose of the neighborhood core district. Although the density exceeds the current zoning by 27 units, this project still meets the goals of the neighborhood core district to provide high-density residential units. Two, the project will not result in excessive off-premise noise, dust, odor, solid waste or glare, or create any public or private nuisances. The project involves the construction of 32 apartment buildings and a private wastewater system. Once construction is completed, no excessive noise, dust, and odors are anticipated from the residential use. Three, the project will not cause significant traffic congestion, impair pedestrian safety, or overload existing roads. The traffic evaluation dated December 23rd, 2021, prepared by VHB Engineering Surveying Landscape Architecture and Geology PC, indicates that the project will have minor impacts on the adjacent roadway network and will operate adequately with the proposed reconstructed Moose Lodge driveway. This was confirmed by New York State DOT Region 8 by letter dated December 23rd, 2021. The conceptual, the conceptual plan was also approved by New York State DOT for work along Route 9 on August 7th, 2024. Four, the project is suitable, given the property's size, location, topography, vegetation, soil's natural habitat, hydrology, hydrology, and its ability to be screened from neighboring properties and public roads. In light of the presence of Landings turtle nesting areas, the applicant has reduced the project's size to protect this habitat. The project includes a turtle mitigation plan. A new bridge is being proposed as part of the project to mitigate potential damages to ecologically sensitive species and the turtle nesting site by replacing the culverts with an open-span bridge. Five, the project will be subject to such conditions on operation, design, and layout of structures and provision of buffer areas as may be necessary to ensure compatibility with surrounding uses and to protect the natural, historic, and scenic resources of the town. The applicant has proposed a mitigation plan to avoid impacts to the identifiable turtle nesting areas and to ensure no impact to the Landings turtles on site. Be it further resolved that the Planning Board approves the mitigation plan set and authorize the chair or her authorized designee to sign the mitigation plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, revision of the mitigation plan set to be entitled mitigation plan set and a note that it supersedes the site plan set. Three, revision of the cover sheet to revise the zoning table to include both the prior and current zoning with a note that reads as follows. The 2003 site plan set was approved under prior zoning and shall conform to the 2003 zoning requirements. Four, revision of the drawing sheet list to be consistent with plan sheets. Five, Planning Board Planner approval of the revised lighting plan. Six, revision of the mitigation plan set to confirm the total number of parking spaces and if it is a sum of the dwelling units and parking auxiliary. Seven, revision of the mitigation plan set to include the federal wetland areas and all designations by letter. Eight, written approval by both Roosevelt and Hyde Park departments of the site plan, including specifications for emergency access road construction and gates and inclusion of all required specifications on the mitigation plan set. Nine, address all comments in the October 31st, 2023 memo from CPL with attached renia engineering design email comments regarding the bridge design, bridge design to the satisfaction of the Planning Board engineer. Ten, inclusion of sheet D 1.2 in the mitigation plan set. Eleven, revision of DWG-N1 to include a note requiring that the emergency access road shall be of sufficient width and surface to handle emergency vehicles during all phases of construction and indicate that it will be constructed in construction phase one. Twelve, approval by the Planning Board engineer, planner, and zoning administrator of a construction phasing plan which identifies thresholds for issuing building permits and certificates of occupancy for groupings of improvements and with the emergency access road included in the first phase of construction. Thirteen, revision of landscaping sheets to include previous notes about transplanting adjustments in the field. Fourteen, revision of sheet C 1.1-3 to correct the reference to the planting schedule to D 1.4 and inclusion of sheet D 1.3 in the mitigation plan set. Fifteen, revision of the mitigation plan set to include sign details for the monument sign and specifications for a light fixture that complies with lighting requirements in the zoning law. Sixteen, revision of the mitigation plan set to include the stormwater landscaping plan. Seventeen, revision of the mitigation plan set to include the signed version of the New York State DEC Wetland Boundary Map. Eighteen, approval by New York State DEC of a speedies permit for discharge from wastewater treatment plant. Nineteen, evidence of recordation with the Dutchess County Clerk of all previously approved easements. Twenty, confirmation from DCWWA that the 2005 memorandum of understanding to supply drinking water to project is in effect or approval by the DCWWA of a new memorandum of understanding and approval of new water main crossing the bridge. Twenty-one, issuance of a wetlands disturbance permit by the New York State DEC. Any subsequent changes to site plan must be approved by the Planning Board and Town Engineer. Twenty-two, approval by New York State DEC and Town Engineer and Army Corps of Engineers, if needed, of stormwater basin designs. Any subsequent changes to site plan must be approved by the Planning Board and Town Engineer. Twenty-three, strict adherence with the mitigation plan and all recommended or required regulations for impacts on Landings turtles habitats on site and on the access roadway shall adhere to New York State DEC guidelines and must be observed during and after construction is completed. Twenty-four, addition of a note on the mitigation plan set stating any use of the Crofton Mews project for or for maintenance of the water line will require Planning Board approval and a full environmental review. Twenty-five, town approval of a local stormwater pursuant, permit pursuant to chapter 93 of the Town Code. Twenty-six, approval by the Town Engineer and Stormwater, Stormwater Management Officer of the SWIP, including the five-acre waiver and de-watering plans. Twenty-seven, approval by the Planning Board of the final design of the shelter or other accommodation for the school buses in consultation with the school district to be included in the mitigation plan set. Twenty-eight, revision of the mitigation plan set to include a construction staging and access plan which demonstrates that the Moose Lodge will be accessible during construction to the satisfaction of the Roosevelt Fire District and the Highway Superintendent or a letter from the Moose Lodge consenting to a temporary loss of access during construction. Twenty-nine, revision of the subdivision plat in mitigation plan set to include the file map number. Thirty, revision of DWGC 1.1 to reference the detail sheets for Crofton Boulevard. Be it further resolved that pursuant to section 108-9.6b of the zoning law, the Planning Board hereby grants the applicant a two-year extension of time to June 7th, 2027, to complete the construction of the project as now set forth on the mitigation plan set. Be it further resolved that the Planning Board hereby grants the applicant a special use permit pursuant to section 108-8.4 of the zoning law to allow for multiple dwelling use in the neighborhood core district as shown on the mitigation plan set. Be it further resolved that prior to the Planning Board recommending that the Town Board accept the performance bond for the proposed town road, including related stormwater improvements, the following conditions shall be met. One, approval by the Planning Board engineer of the amount of the performance guarantee. Two, final approval by New York State DOT of Crofton Boulevard Route 9G intersection and specifications and inclusion of all approved New York State DOT specifications on the mitigation plan set. Three, approval by Town Engineer and Highway Superintendent of final plans and specifications for Crofton Boulevard, including the bridge specifications. Sheet WD-1 indicates that Bridges A and B are shown on sheet BR-3, but that sheet is not provided in the mitigation plan set. The mitigation plan set shall be updated to include the missing sheet or amend the notes on sheet WD-1. Four, approval by the Dutchess Estates Water Company of temporary and any necessary permanent easements for permanent wing walls and temporary bridge de-watering and installation with proof of recordation of same with the Dutchess County Clerk. Be it further resolved that no certificate of occupancy for the last completed structure on the site shall be issued until an as-built survey has been submitted to the zoning administrator verifying the complete implementation of the mitigation set. Completion of all site plan elements must be in place and verified by an as-built survey prior to the zoning administrator authorizing issuance of the CO for each structure. May I have a second?
Second.
I had one change, though, sorry. I did miss one of the, one of the clauses. So paragraph nine about the CPL comment letter gets moved down to be under the performance guarantee.
Does it have a number?
It'll become four, and then four gets moved down to five. But the language stays the same.
That's the longest one I've heard.
Okay, so we have a second. Is there any more discussion or comments or amendments? Or fixes?
Oh, you can motion to adopt as amended.
I, thank you. May I make, can I have a motion to adopt?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? The motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lou.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Lou.
Thank you, Lou.
It was the second set.
You're not buying any more property in Hyde Park.
Any more complicated projects? Yes.
Thank you. Have a great night. Okay. There's one.
That's the longest one I've heard since.
So the next item on the agenda is to, on the agenda is to hire an environmental monitor consultant for the NRI project at the Culinary. Just, I think you all were copied on emails. Last week, Dylan and Chris and Tad and Cynthia were on calls with two applicant, two applicants. And they talked and discussed, and they came up with a recommendation to hire MPFP LLC as the environmental invasive species monitors. I just want to know if anybody here had any questions or if either Chris or Dylan wanted to offer any comments on?
I think it was in the email to the board.
Yes, no, thank, and thank you very much. Yes, no, thank, and thank you very much for that. That was lovely to read. All right, so we do have a, a motion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
To authorize the chairwoman to sign a contract to hire them. Thank you. Is there any discussion? No?
Yeah, contingent on attorney review and approval because we've got to meet.
Okay, this is contingent on attorney reviewing and approving. Thank you. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or nays, motion carries? Thank you. And that leaves me to one more item, and that is.
Adjournment?
Get a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. This has been lovely. Thank you to the town board for providing the facilities to broadcast this, and thank you, Tony in the back, for keeping us looking good.